We'll call this meeting of the Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Monday, October 3rd, 2022 to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the robe.
Commissioner McKay?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Liner?
Here.
Commissioner Mark?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
Chairman Jones?
Here.
If you will, please let us stand together as our county attorney will lead us in prayer and remain standing for our pledge of allegiance, please.
Father God, who spoke the heavens and earth into existence, thank you for first loving us and sending your Son, Jesus Christ, that we might have a full and meaningful life. Forgive our many sins against you and against other people. Help us live at peace with our neighbors and in obedience to your will as set forth in the Bible. Gathered here today are leaders who have given their lives to serve others. Help them to love you first, their families second, and other people third. Because without you first in their lives, without loving families, and without love for all peoples, we cannot expect this nation and county to be great. In the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We want to welcome each of you here this evening. And to those in attendance, we would ask you, if you please, would make sure that your cellphones are on silent to not disrupt this meeting. And also, we welcome those who may be viewing online. Commissioners, you have your agenda packet before you. Are there any items you desire to add or pull from the agenda?
I approve the, make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. The first item of business before us this evening is the public hearing for the comprehensive transportation plan. And I'm going to ask Mr. Baumgarten if he will come up and just make a comment or two, and then we will go into our public hearing.
Sure. I was going to defer it to-
That's fine.
...the state-
That's, that's fine.
-working with this closely. She's got a presentation prepared real short.
That's good. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Hamel Shaw with NC DOT Department of Transportation's Transportation Planning Division. We are working on a comprehensive transportation plan. And for the, before the adoption, we are having a public hearing today. So I just wanted to give you a brief description, what is comprehensive transportation plan. So comprehensive transportation plan is a 25 to 30-year planning document that helps NC DOT, MPOs, RPOs in planning for multimodal facilities. It includes project recommendations for highway, bicycle, pedestrian, next slide, please. Bus transit, passenger rails, and other modes of transportation. The benefit of having the comprehensive transportation plan is it gives you the project definitions. It gives you the project, detailed projects for the programming and the project development. So if the project is identified in the comprehensive transportation plan, we don't guarantee that it will be built. In the plan, we are just identifying the need for the area. So, next slide, please. To develop the project recommendations, we went through all the existing plans that listed here. We hosted two public workshops and two online public surveys to gather input. And based on all the inputs, we developed the project recommendations. The next slide shows the notable highway projects such as future I-42, US-70 improvements, hell of bypass, New Bern bypass, and couple of roundabouts at the airport. Next slide shows the map of the all highway recommendations. The projects are categorized in expressway, boulevards, major thoroughfare, and the minor thoroughfare. And all the recommendations are listed here. The next slide shows the public transportation and rail mode. Here, the future and existing bus services are shown, also the rail alignment are shown here. The next map is the bicycle map. It shows the on-road, off-road, and the multi-use path location for the existing and the proposed. The multi-use path is for bicycle and pedestrian both. Next slide is the pedestrian map. Here, all the sidewalk, existing and proposed are shown, along with the off-road and the multi-use path. Again, the multi-use path serves the bicycle and the pedestrian modes. Do you want me to stop for the presentation to come?
Hold on one second.
Sure.
There we go. There we got it.
Okay, so, that's all the modal recommendations. We went through highway, bicycle, pedestrian, and the public transportation and rail. The next slide shows the schedule for the plan. So today, we are having, next slide, please. Today, we are having the public hearing, and then, if you wish to proceed forward, we can go for the adoptions for all the jurisdictions in the RPOs, MPO adopts, and the Down East RPO will endorse the plan. And then it comes back to Board of Transportation for NC DOT, and they will adopt to become, finalize the plan. And I'll take any questions if you have.
All right. Let's go into our public hearing, and then we may have questions after. Okay, do I have a motion that we would open the public hearing? Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we now stand in public hearing. Mr. Vice Chair?
We don't have anyone who signed up who wanted to speak at the public hearing.
Okay. All right, do we have any citizen that is present that did not sign up, that desires to speak in the public hearing? Hear no body that would like to speak. Do I have a motion that we would close the public hearing?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. All right, back to the board. Any questions for our DOT representative? Not, again, we thank you for being here and for your cooperation, your hard work to get us to this point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Next item is the petition of citizens for agenda topics. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks. Mr. Vice Chair, do we have anyone signed up?
We have no one signed up to speak on the agenda.
Okay. Anyone present that failed to sign up for agenda topics? All right, seeing no one, we'll go to item three, which is the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, you have the minutes of the September 19th, 2022 regular session, tax releases and refunds, and also the recreation and parks bench donation budget amendment. Are there any items that you desire to pull?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hear none. Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
We're very honored this evening to have a number of our Craven County Sheriff's Office with us. And Sheriff Hughes, we're going to ask you to come first and to introduce those that are in attendance that will make a dare presentation to us.
Yep.
Good evening.
Chairman, good evening. Commissioners, it's my privilege tonight to have our, some of our SROs here who are dare instructors and are lieutenant over the SRO division. I can tell you, I could not be prouder of our SROs. And I know y'all have invested in school safety, the security and safety of our children and educators, and I can't thank you enough. The men and women that fill these positions have to wear multiple hats every day. Not only are they a protector, but they wear, once again, many hats helping our kids. And one of the things that they are very passionate about is our dare program. And, you know, we have it in all of our elementary schools that we have, and, and we are moving it, you know, through our middle schools, and ultimately, it will be in our high schools as well. So we look to have it in our schools. But at your request, we, we have them here tonight to give you a presentation, to talk about the good things they're doing, and they'll, you know, present you with some data that shows that this program, the dare program, works. Not only is it just drug resistance education, it's talking about good life choices, you know. So, once again, I could not be more proud of them. So I'm going to ask Sergeant Jason Detwiler and Deputy Patricia Moore if they will come up and, and give you the presentation and answer any questions that you might have about the program.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Corporal Patricia Moore, and I am one of the dare officers here with Craven County Sheriff's Office. And as Sheriff mentioned, it's, we're really proud of what we've done in such a short amount of time here in Craven County. With our dare unit, if you can go to the next slide, just a little bit about dare. Dare envisions a world in which students everywhere are empowered to respect others and choose to lead lives free from violent substance use and other dangerous behaviors. I know when most people think about dare, they think drug abuse resistance education. And that's all it is. It is so much more than that. If you ask any of the kids who went through dare last year what dare means, they're probably going to tell you that it means define, assess, respond, evaluate. Because for them, dare is the dare decision-making model. We use that with everything, not just drugs, not just substance abuse, bullying, peer pressure, how to make good life choices. And especially as these, as these kids are going into middle school, they really need that. They really need to be prepared for the things that they're going to see in middle school. I know there's a lot of information out there about dare and the questions of, does it work? Is it any good? There's been articles printed quite a few years ago about dare not working. One of the things that I can say is the gentleman who actually wrote that article saying that dare doesn't work was asked by Dare America in 2014 to come on board, show us why it doesn't work. And so he actually sits on the board for Dare America now and is on the scientific advisory committee. And so he has helped revamp dare to what it is today, where it's more of the life choices, good decision-making. And he actually came back and wrote another article, new dare and why it works, because he was able to really get involved in the curriculum and how, how it's done, so that it, it is something that is successful. They've shown that there's 32 to 44 percent reduction in marijuana, tobacco, and alcohol use in schools that have had dare in grade six through nine, as well as 29 to 34 percent decrease in an intent to accept or use substances at some point in their life. That's just a little bit of the data. Personally, the biggest thing when it comes to dare is the relationships we build, more than anything else. It's great to be able to show the data as far as substance abuse and those sorts of things, but it's really the fact that we build that trust with these kids who, I teach, I'm actually at New Bern High School, so I'm not with any of my kids that I teach with, but I'll be at a football game, and they'll come up and they'll freak out, "Oh, it's, it's Officer Moore." It's like, dare officer. They come up, they give you a big hug, they trust you. They come to you if they need something. And a lot of it is really about those relationships that we build when it comes to dare. If you can go to the next slide, please. Dare, a little more about dare. Dare was started actually in Los Angeles in 1983 to create a program to fight drug abuse and violent crime. It's now taught in 80% of schools nationwide in 50-plus countries. A lot of people don't realize that dare is actually the only substance abuse education that is accepted internationally and is accepted in the United Nations. There's, they've actually are involved in creating programs for things in other countries. For example, Saudi Arabia came to dare and asked them if they could create an anti-extremism program in their schools and for their young people. So it is a lot more than just drug abuse resistance education. But I'm going to turn it over to Corporal Beecham.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
You can get to the next slide. Craven County Sheriff's Office has come together with the ABC Board, the county school, partner in education, and we brought it back from where it has not been in the school for 15-plus years. Last year, we told in 10 elementary schools, and that's 750-plus elementary school for fifth-grade students. And this year, we're going to be in 14 elementary schools, and it's going to be over 1,000 fifth graders. Next slide. Right now, our dare unit is Sergeant Jason Detwiler, you'll hear him in just a second, Corporal Patricia Moore, Lisa Beecham, and Deputy Alan Scherlock. So that's, we have two more going through training this coming in a few months. So then we'll have two more so we can have, have it in more schools.
Thank you. Good evening, folks. I'm Sergeant Jason Detwiler with Craven County Sheriff's Office, also the dare unit. Next slide, please. Dare to Slime Event was something that was actually brought very quickly to my attention for a fundraiser for our dare unit rate in Craven County. And at my school at Brinson, I am the SRO at Brinson, a fundraiser was put on. And when I looked at this fundraiser and how much the kids loved it, I said, this could work. And not only could this work, this could work for our dare unit. And just to give us a little bit more funding, a little bit more help, so when we get this funding and when we get this help, it goes right back into these kids, whether it's more supplies, whether it's more workbooks, whether it is more prizes that we can give away to these children. So in that, what we actually did is nine participating schools, and what we did is a three-week rotation where they had change jars. And what they could do is lose change, just gather loose change. And what we did with that loose change is every week, we counted it up, and we had a rundown of what the top schools were. And the schools got to go against each other, and if they got to a certain level, they got to go ahead and slime their SRO. But if they got to an even bigger level, they got to slime their dare officer. If they got to their top goal, they got to go ahead and slime the admin staff, which graciously, a lot of our principals, assistant principals, and/or teachers decided to take that plunge and get slimed with us. But the top three schools got a little bit special. So our number-one school actually was Trent Park Elementary, and they got to slime Sheriff Hughes and also Superintendent Miller. So they got a little bit extra. Now with that, the Craven County Dare Unit was actually able to take in over $6,600, of which 1,600, almost $1,600, we actually donated to the North Carolina Dare Officers Association. And that helps put on our conference and continued training so we can send more officers from Craven County and surrounding counties to become dare officers. So if you go to the next slide, we actually have a couple, couple pictures of our, our slime event. It was a huge success, absolutely loved it. Can't wait to do it this year. We're going to have all 14 participating schools this year. We've already on board with them. Is there any questions?
Questions from the board? The only thing I have to say is that one school we don't have you in is in Vanceboro.
Yes, sir.
And that's because the mayor of Vanceboro and the chief of Vanceboro decided to provide the SRO officer in that school.
Yes. In the future, that is something we, we would like to touch on, though, even though we want to bring dare across, across the county. It doesn't matter if we're providing an SRO in that school or not. So we want to branch out and even partnering with Vanceboro or, or continue partnering with them to provide them with dare.
The chairman and I would like to do that.
Yes, sir. That's, that's, that's what our goal is. It's just with, right now, with three dare officers and hopes for two more coming, it's just a little bit, a little, a little bit tricky right now.
Okay.
But we're definitely working on it.
Thank you for the work you do.
Thank you, sir. Vice Chair?
Not a question, but a comment, and that for the, excuse me, the folks in the audience and those folks at home, the money for dare largely comes from the ABC Board.
Yes, sir.
Alcohol Beverage Commission is, the ABC Board is required by state statute to provide money for a variety of programs to reduce alcohol and drug use. And so dare gets its funding from the profit that we make. We, I'm on that board, the profit that the ABC Board earns every year, a portion of it has to go for education. And that's where this money comes from. So I just want everybody to understand, it isn't your taxpayer dollars that is doing this, it's the dollars coming from the ABC Board that does the primary funding of dare.
Yes, sir. Also, we have, with that, we had the fundraiser, and we also have private donations. We actually have on our board, we, we partner with, of course, the ABC Board, and Partners in Education, Craven County Partners in Education helps us out tremendously. You can actually go onto their website and donate to the dare program at any time. We actually put that in, in place this past year.
Any other questions, comments? I just wanted to say, when I was in fifth grade, I took dare. And I've tried to think of our dare officer that we had back in the day, but it made an impact on all of our lives during then, and I still remember that. And I know Commissioner Smith, she was a principal in elementary school, so she remembers it fondly, too. But we are very appreciative, Sheriff, for you and all of your officers for the dedication you're, and time that you're providing for this service that's needed in our schools, and, and we thank you. We thank you for the presentation you made this evening and for all you do for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Have a good night.
Good evening. All right, next, Commissioners on the departmental matters, we have planning the adoption of the North Carolina Department of Transportation Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Mr. Baumgarten?
This consideration tonight for adoption is, is the plan that we had seen at our September 19th meeting. And since that point in time, the board had asked whether there was an executive summary, and there was, and we actually did post that on the county's website, along with the notice of a public hearing that we held earlier this evening. At this particular point in time, we're looking to request the adoption of the Craven County and the North Carolina Department of Transportation Comprehensive Transportation Plan for Craven County. And this will serve us, the plan is to have this work for a period of 25 to 30 years. If at any time during the life of this plan, the board chooses to amend the plan, that's certainly a process that we can go through to amend it. The items that are shown in the plan would need to coincide with our request for funding. So as part of the MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization, the RPO, request for funding, the plan itself would need to match with those funding requests. So if in the future, we have new ideas and new projects, new needs, then we would need to move forward to amend this, this plan.
Okay. Are there any questions about the plan for Mr. Baumgarten? All right, hear no questions. What's desired of the board?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the adoption of the NC DOT Craven County CT Plan. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. Appreciate it. Next, Commissioners, we have appointments. You have there before you pending, current, and upcoming. Do any of the Commissioners have any pending appointments they want to take care of this evening? Hear none. We will move to current. The first one is the Craven Aging Planning Board. Commissioner Liner, what's your desire?
Desire is to be reappointed.
Okay, we've got the nomination of Ms. Carolyn Squires. Do we have additional nominations? Hear none. We will set Ms. Squires by acclamation. Next would be the Craven County Clean Sweep, Mr. Tom Glasgow seeks reappointment.
I would make a motion to reappoint, Tom.
All right, we have nomination of Mr. Glasgow. Are there additional nominations? Hear none. Mr. Glasgow will be accepted by acclamation. Commissioners, you also have there before you, under Attachment 6B, the revised bylaws for Clean Sweep Committee. We have with us this evening, Ms. Pam Hawkins. First, let me say, Ms. Pam, with Chad and Don, they all kind of took it under their wing now, and are going to be assisting our solid waste department with this. And they have come up with a new set of bylaws that they would like to present to the board to consider. You got any comments this evening, Ms. Pam?
Just, I mean, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. We really just noticed that it hasn't been looked at since 2008. So they're very minor updates, just a little verbiage here and there, but I would like to answer any specific questions.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, do you have any questions, concerns about the bylaws? All right, I'm not hearing none, so would I have a motion to accept? Okay.
You'd make a motion.
I got a motion and a second to accept the Craven County Clean Sweep Committee bylaws. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. All right, thank you, Ms. Pam. Appreciate what you're doing with that. Just for clarification, have you rescheduled our Clean Sweep yet?
We are looking at November 5th.
Okay.
I just need to make sure we have enough people to handle all the locations, but we'll try to announce that by the end of the week.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate what you're doing. All right, next, Commissioners, you have the Southeast Partnership Board. You have an applicant, Mr. Owen Andrews, who seeks appointment.
I recommend we appoint him.
Okay, we have the nomination of Mr. Andrews, additional nominations. Hear none, he will be accepted by acclamation. Next would be the Craven County Recreation Advisory Council. Commissioner Liner, this is your district.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, we will accept, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce that last name.
Sure can go.
Okay. We, we have any additional nominations? Hear none, we will set him by acclamation. Next would be the Craven County Board of Adjustment. We have one vacancy, and we have two applicants attached for consideration. The first would be Josh Whitford, and the second would be Mr. James Ferguson. We have a nomination.
I would nominate Joshua Whitford.
Okay, we have the nomination of Mr. Whitford. Are there additional nominations? Hear none, we will set Mr. Whitford for this position. Next would be the City of New Bern Board of Adjustment, ETJ, appointment needed. Staff, we probably, there's that list that you usually provide, could you print it out for our next meeting and provide that to the Commissioners? All right, any discussion on that, concerns? Hear none. You see the upcoming terms expiring, and please take note of them. Are there any additional appointments to consider this evening? Hear none, we will move to the county attorney's report, Mr. Eric Grady. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We have several tax foreclosure properties to consider this evening, six to be precise. The first five, the board has already given preliminary review to. They've been through the upset bid process, and we have final bids in place. All of these properties are jointly owned with the City of New Bern, and the city has already given final approval to these transactions. So I'll go through them parcel by parcel. The first one is 803 Pavey Avenue, parcel number eight, 007105. Our final bid was $2,000. Past due taxes and the cost of foreclosure were originally $4,291.75, and the tax value of the property is $4,000. We recommend that the board consider giving final approval to this, this one.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? And the motion is to adopt the resolution approving conveyance. Hear no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. All right, B.
The second parcel is 2107 Pearson Street with a parcel ID number of 8039079. We've got a bid amount of $3,750. The original taxes and the cost of foreclosure were $4,805.06. The tax value of the property is $7,500. I also recommend the board consider giving approval to this one.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second for the adoption of approval. Any further discussion on the motion? Hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. All right, C.
210 Duffy Street with a parcel ID number of 8018057. We've got a bid amount of $4,500. The original past due taxes and the cost of foreclosure totaled $1,914.21. The tax value on the property is $9,000. As with the, with the others, I recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second for the adoption of a resolution approving the conveyance. Any further discussion on the motion? Hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. All right, D.
We've got a parcel ID number of 8022081, and the address is 801, I'm sure I'll get this wrong, but Chawaka Lane. We've got a bid amount of $12,000, I'm sorry, a bid amount of $14,000. The past due taxes and the cost of foreclosure were together $9,777.06, and the tax value of the property is $15,000. I recommend the board consider giving approval to this one as well.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, and that is to adopt the resolution approving conveyance. Any discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. All right, E.
2410 Georgia Avenue with a parcel ID number of 8-018-123. We've got a bid amount of $8,000. The past due taxes and the cost of foreclosure were $8,889.78 and the tax value is $13,500. I recommend the Board give approval to this, this one as well.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and that is to adopt the resolution approving conveyance. Any discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, F.
The last one is an initial approval for 806 Main Street with a parcel ID number of The City of New Bern has already considered this one and given its preliminary approval. We have a bid amount of $2,000. The original taxes and the cost of foreclosure were $2,985.72 and the tax value of the property is $4,000. As the Board will recall, if you give preliminary approval to this one, it'll be put out for upset bids and the Board will be able to give final approval after that process runs its course.
What's desired of the Board?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, that is to adopt the resolution approving the transaction and authorizing upset bid process. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Anything else, Mr. Grady?
No, sir, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. Next, we have the petition of citizens for general topics and again, each Speaker will have three minutes to make remarks, which will be timed this evening. Also, as you come forward, we would ask if you would, please give your name and your address for the record. Mr. Vice Chair, do we have anyone signed up?
We have two. First one would be Lorelei Schafhausen, Schafhausen, I'm sorry, I'll close.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. And I want to thank each of you who contacted my inquiry as to the newspaper article, which erroneously makes it look like you are going to make changes to the historic New Bern County courthouse and greatly relieved to find out that this was really misrepresented. And so I wanted to, one, thank those of you that had reached out to me and explain this to myself and other folks in the area that are, were concerned by this article and congratulate you on obtaining the grants necessary to actually make the part of the building that is not usable, restore it and again, something that can be an asset to our community. I would though encourage you to think deeply about the design of even the addition that you're renovating. Well, it was done originally during a period where we did not have the same guidelines that we have now to maintain the historic character of downtown New Bern. I do understand now that the process will involve going to the Historic Preservation Commission and whatever happens, we'll meet those guidelines. So I just wanted to say thank you again for responding to citizens that are saying, hey, we're concerned about what's going on and keep up the good work.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Ray Griffin.
Good evening, sir.
Good to see all of you, God bless you. Ray Griffin, 1981 St. Free Road, Fansport, North Carolina, and this is going to be something that's been widely talked about. The political arena is awarded with claims of transparency while laughing behind our back and hiding the truth. Evil triumphs where truth is not present. When we get morally right, America will get right. Nobody wants to draw a line anymore. We need to get serious, we must encourage others to stand and do the right thing. America today has graduated more doctors, lawyers, politicians, judges, teachers and so forth than ever in history, but yet they all have one thing in common, that they don't have any common sense. Standards have changed. You will never be sorry for living a pure life, for doing your level best, for standing on your principles and being fair in business dealings. Why is it that things that have been working for years now need to be changed? Now you want or will choose to change the name of the New Bern Riverfront Convention Center to the Riverfront Convention Center of Craven County. The cost of this will come to around $40,000, I understand. And y'all talk about property tax and income tax, all this kind of tax, it doesn't matter where it comes from, it's still taxed. Anywhere you get money from any, it's taxed, it's taxed and we have paid. So we are in a situation that that money could be used for something and nothing is free. Many as, money is no object when it comes out of someone else's pocket. There is, this is not the proper time to waste $40,000 with all this going on in the world today. What's the future looks like for our children, our grandchildren, and when we make unwise choices, we have consequences. All we have is a political theater with the politicians as the main attraction. Changing the name will not generate any more income. I've seen the time we've changed the name of churches, it didn't make any difference, people still didn't come or no more difference in the dollar bill. The problem isn't that the government wants to help, the problem is what kind of help the government is getting or offering us. We need to look at what's going on. That $40,000 could be used for sheriff department or teachers or resource officer or something to that effect. And why is it it's got to change? Things are getting worse than they have ever been in this life. I remember I was sitting here thinking, when I was looking at this, you remember when the license plate deal came and y'all, whoever was at the time, raised our taxes so that we'd have to pay extra more money for license plates to go to global transport? When you got that money back, what did y'all do with it? You kept it. We taxpayers didn't get none back. So what we needed to do was look at this situation and realize that God's still in control. That science is in God we trust and that's where we need to be trusting God. And I have to vote for you twice, Mr. Butcher. If I can vote for, I get the rest of the congregation to vote for you twice too. So you keep up the good work and y'all should think about $40,000, that's a lot of money, just a waste on science, changing the, whatever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, appreciate you coming in before the Board of Commissioners. Next would be the County Manager's Report, Mr. I.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity. I used to believe a picture was worth a thousand words, but tonight it's going to take about 20. Because obviously, we need a little help on it. So I'm going to turn a little bit so I can kind of point. This is aerial shot, which I think is fantastic, it was a drone shot after we had done some of the brickwork last spring at the courthouse. And what it shows is the historic courthouse, we're kind of hovering over Broad Street right now, kind of in the intersection and we're looking down Craven and you see the historic courthouse, which we all love. And then in the back, you see a round structure, brick coming up, and then you see two windows at the top there. That's the old jail, that is not the courthouse. That's the first fact here. This is not the historic courthouse that we're going to be talking about tonight. Next slide, please. Is that the next slide? Okay, they look a lot similar, but you can kind of see, we're kind of turned a little bit at an angle so you can see more. Now three windows there, you can see a smaller roofed structure just beyond the stairwell and then a higher roofed structure, which was actually the old jail when it was there. Next slide. This is the area we're talking about. This is what was the original Sally Port entrance to the sheriff's office at the time, the jail. You went underneath, that's actually below grade. To your left, those are actually hurricane shutters, which didn't do much good during the last hurricane, I'll admit that. But that was where the magistrate was, if many believe, there's a magistrate downtown, they were located there. There was all types of elevators and ways to get around the building once you got inside. Next picture, please. Kind of a different angle. If you notice from the drone footage, there's that circular staircase there, that is an emergency exit and then we have a staircase here, which would be right behind 911, actually right in front of 911. Again, looking at the hurricane shutters there, which is the jury pool room now and then some restroom areas in there. Next slide. We really liked that picture, so we're going to go one more. Kind of a different angle there, so we can see what we're looking at. Now, let's talk about why. Why are we doing this? Because of this picture right here. That is September 13th, 2018, at 10:44 PM, probably the worst night of my life, because I was one floor up from there. And everything I needed was in that basement. Fuel pump for the generator, boiler for hot water, you name it, air conditioner, air handler, the whole nine yards, and it flooded. Next slide. This is the magistrate's office. Those glass doors there would have been where you would have entered, the wooden door would have been where the office was. That door with the red sign would go to the emergency exit and of course, you can see the backside of the hurricane shutter that did not work. Next slide.
Hey Jack?
Yes, sir.
Could you pause? A few ladies in the back row would like to come to the front and then you can turn around and see, because I know you can't. Oh, whoa, we're back up over here.
Yeah.
But if you want to come up front, then you could get a better view.
So I wish I could, I wish I had a timestamp on this, this is sometime after Hurricane Florence when it quit raining. But that's not pavement that's going down into the Sally Port, that's actually water, where it filled up like a bowl on both sides. Because it's subgrade, it gets there where the river's high, there's no, there's a drain, but it won't drain, because there's nowhere for it to go. Next slide. Let's talk about what it looked like after. This is once we pumped out the Sally Port, what it looked like. Now remember, all the key infrastructure was in this Sally Port. It's really hard to see, but about six feet up the wall, you'll see what looks like somebody took a pencil and drew across. That was the high watermark. Next slide. You can see a little bit better here, look at the trash line on the wall. So that cord that's going up to the silver or gray area, you can see that's about six foot, if you're standing on the ground, the back it was about nine feet. A little bit of an elevation change in there. Next slide. This still looks like this, but I wanted to give you a perspective of what is a receiving area for trash, dumpsters, but this was another point where water came to the facility, we're going to show you some drawings on how this is going to change as well. Next slide. So the picture that needs more than a thousand words to talk about, so this was the picture and the describe was, historic Craven County courthouse gets a facelift. Historic, nonhistoric Craven County jail gets a facelift. Old county jail is what this picture shows, just to be clear. Next slide. So talking about it, put this in perspective, these are some of the drawings we shared with you at one of our work sessions, probably about a year and a half ago. You'll see everything in red, means we're going to rework the sidewalk out front because it has some challenges, it hits a sharp angle down some very steep stairs, we had several falls, we're going to work that in part of the project. The lighter sort of transparent red line is where the utilities that are actually above ground will go underground now. Number one, that's, it's great for us for continuity of service, but two, it'll make it look a lot better, because if you look out there now, I wish we could go back to one of the pictures, you'll see it's just a ream of wires going through there. The red box in the back, this is our emergency services parking lot, that'll actually be a covered awning that covers the area where the dumpster was in that photo, so we'll actually have some, some security there. We're still using the Sally Port actively for court operations, so we'll continue to maintain that. The canopy will not be red, it's just showed in red so you can see it tonight. And then we got two things, which were the picture, the lighter pale yellow, it's almost white here, that is a series of stairs and a handicap ramp so we can get people into the new building, because we're raising the building up to where the first floor of emergency services now will be the real first floor, nothing subgrade. So we're going to have the beginning elevator there, we'll also have a small lobby and a set of handicap accessible restrooms. Next slide. You've got to put that in even further perspective, so this is the subgrade, we're going to go one, or kind of like 1A, 1B, 2 and 3. So 1A is ground level, as you see, we're going to flatten that Sally Port out where it has an incline, we'll fill that up, build a base, we'll build the stairwell there, which goes up to the top and then it'll have a rather long ramp. Next slide. There we go, so this will be the new first floor, you see that pale yellow area comes up, elevator, restrooms, and then the sidewalk modification we see there. Next slide. Second floor, this is, so the area shaded in blue is historic Superior Courtroom number two. Number one, Superior Courtroom number one, that's the big courtroom that kind of stands by itself on the second floor. Right now, to get a person who is handicapped in there, we have to really work them around, this will give them clear access into the back of the courtroom, whether it's a juror, a citizen who's there, an attorney, whoever, we'll be able to get them in now. Next slide. And of course, this is the third floor, which is mainly where our mezzanine, when we took everything out of the Sally Port, we put it on this floor, so this is mainly for us internally to get to our stuff on the top. That's also where the generator is. Next slide. That's it. So I wanted to be available, I have Gene with me, who's worked on this project now for three and a half years. Any questions you have, we'll be happy to answer tonight and address any, any issues.
I think the main point that, you know, I think, just clarification, make sure everybody understands, this is not facing the front of the courthouse.
Correct.
This is over here on the side to the annex that was built on some years later.
I believe the old jail and sheriff's also built in the mid 80s, early to mid 80s.
And so in, in front of this, we still have the side entrance with the...
Steve, can you go back to that drone photo?
Historical.
Second photo? I think this one's just a great photo in itself.
Yes.
So the tower there with the spiral on top, that's that entrance, so that remains the same. You can see there's, there's actually a good bit of courthouse going down to you.
It's on the back side.
Right.
It's on the back side. Any questions from the Board? Just, okay.
I don't have a question, but this did cause a lot of people, I think on the Facebook page for the Sun Journal, there were like 200 plus people who commented, that's a lot of comments. I didn't read them all, but I looked at a number of them and it caused a lot of people to have a lot of angst, if that's the right word. And there's an old saying, if I read it in the paper, it must be true, right? It isn't necessarily true and I think we need to, we need to always, when we see something like that, we need to really take time and pause and say, is this, is this really right? It's unfortunate that the paper did what they did and I personally spoke to the editor, I know you did as well, and he was apologetic, he was not aware of, you know, he's the editor for three papers and he was not aware of it until he started hearing the noise. So he is going to try to put something in the paper to, not a reversal, but a clarification and hopefully that'll cause some people who don't watch this meeting and are still concerned and upset to see what the facts are.
Any additional?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I mean, it's, it gets tiresome, you know, they talk about social media and we have a newspaper that doesn't even attend this meeting anymore, that used to attend, when I started here in 2010, we had somebody attending each meeting, the morning meeting, the afternoon meeting, and we don't have that anymore, but we have reporting by that same paper and you say the man has three papers that he's in charge of, but when a ship goes down, so does the captain. Thank you.
Jack, just for clarification, I think, make sure we understand the process that we're in now. If you can, just walk us through where, where we're at at the present time. I think one of our speakers made the comment about it's got to go before the historical...
Right, absolutely.
Downtown Historical Society Commission, HPC.
Absolutely. So we have been negotiating with FEMA for three and a half years on what they'd be willing to pay for. We found out very quickly, not a lot. I mean, it's just the way it works. You think, you think beginning you're going to get a lot, but you don't, but we're blessed that our state legislature saw fit to put money in their last budget to help us through this project, because they know we want to be resilient, mitigate some challenges. So what you see here is a rendering, it is only a rendering. We have to have something to start with, we are down the road with it, but of course, we have to go before the HPC, just like anybody else, we're not exempt from any process. Just like we talked with our frustration with our courthouse restoration project with the bricks, where we had, you know, we did all the mortar and brick, we couldn't put a certain ceiling on that we thought would really be helpful, we got to go through that same process again and then we'll go from there. If we got to go back, you know, and make some adjustments to the current rendering, we'll do that. We do have a finite amount of money, obviously, so anything that goes above what the budget is now, we'll have to come back to this board, but we're in it for the long haul here, to follow the process.
Okay. All right.
Yes, Commissioner Smith.
I think it might be helpful if we had a clear rendering of the front of the courthouse as we do the side. We have a, a aerial view of the front there, but when we get to the part that we are revamping, we have the...
Just showing the side.
Yes, showing the side.
Showing like the...
Folks are looking at that thinking that's the...
I think that was a challenge, right? I think that was the challenge, right? The one picture that got showed was the rendering without showing some of the things we showed you tonight. You're exactly right, Commissioner.
Well, we thank you for clarification.
I hope this...
And I hope this has helped those citizens that are in attendance.
Let me off for Mr. Gene. He's been in this for three and a half years. If I left anything out, he might want to say.
I think we covered it.
I've covered it, boss.
Okay. Thank you, Gene. Any questions for the County Manager? All right. Hear none. We will now go to Commissioner's Report. When I wrote this out, we were all still in the same lineup, but anyway, you want to begin, Commissioner K?
Yeah. I just have one thing. Tomorrow night, there will be national night out in Hell Block with our Sheriff's Department. The time is from 4 to 7 PM, so everyone is ready to come. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank all the staff and leaders in Craven County who came to North Carolina's First Defense Summit in Raleigh on September 27. We had so many people who, who attended, we had to cap the membership of it. We hope this will be the first of many annual events. We had a, obviously, this was focused on defense as North Carolina's second-largest economic sector, but Craven County made an outstanding showing, both from this office, the city, from Allies for Cherry Point, and from both Fleet Readiness Center and for, from Cherry Point itself. So thank you for your support. Appreciate it, and first to many.
That's good. Thank you. Commissioner Lina?
Sir, I have nothing.
Commissioner Smear?
I have a couple of things here. Next, next week is National School Lunch Week, and I plan to volunteer for service at J.G. Barber on the 13th. So, and my other statement that I'd like to make is that we're having reevaluation at the 17th at 6 o'clock. District Three will be, have information on redistricting, ah, re, I'm sorry, re-evaluation. And I'm encouraging property owners that live in that district to come and hear what needs to be said or will be said on that date.
Got to see mine.
That is October 17th at 6 o'clock in Courtroom Four. So if you live in District Three, please come at that time and hear what's going to be said about evaluation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rhea.
Commissioner Moore?
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Vice Chair?
I do not.
Okay. I have nothing to bring before the Board of Commissioners, and I, staff, anything else? All right. Hear nothing else? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I take that as a motion, a second. All those in favor, 65, say aye.
Aye.